Hello everyone, welcome to Chamber Chatter Live. I'm Tara Doyle Enneke, CEO of the Puyallup-Sumner Chamber. We are about to start our first of a series of candidates running for City of Puyallup and City of Sumner. Today, I have my co-host here.
Hi, I'm Luke Coram. I'm the Chair of the Political Affairs Committee for the Puyallup-Sumner Chamber of Commerce.
I think you also are pretty involved in the local advocacy.
Yes, yes, I'm also with Puyallup Nissan, that's right.
Excellent.
And then we have Dean Johnson, a sitting City Council member who is with us. Our very first council member to be interviewed on this Facebook Live that we just started here, so we're glad to have you, Dean.
Yeah, welcome Dean Johnson. Councilman Dean Johnson, tell us what one of your most proudest accomplishments have been in the last four years serving on City Council for Puyallup?
Well, glad to do that. First of all, thank you to all the Chamber members and those who will be watching this conversation, and thanks Tara and Luke for the invitation to participate. Very grateful and honored to have the opportunity to share my story. In terms of my accomplishments, what I really like, the best thing that I've enjoyed is multiple things, but one thing, especially the last year, I've been so proud of is the strong support that I and many of my colleagues in the City Council have taken to support public safety. There's been a lot of issues of crime and struggles in our city. Our police force has been overtaxed with a big lull on officers. And so, I was proud to be the one who brought the motion to hire on six new officers in our city at the tune of about $1.5 million dollars a year to our added budget. We believe it was a sacrifice well worth the endeavor to protect our citizens, protect our businesses, and to make sure that we have a peaceable community that we can all enjoy. So, to me, that was really huge. The other thing that we did was very big, which was to raise the, we signed a new contract for the police, so the police in their prior contract was about midway in their comparables. This new contract now puts the Puyallup Police at the upper end of comparables, so we're going to attract quality police officers who want to serve here and want to do their service here for our citizens. To me, that was a huge step in the right direction. And then, I think the other thing that was very interesting and we're talking about right now is the public safety thing. It's a little bit touchy on the price tag, but my opinion is, you're overdue. We need one, we just gotta figure out the dynamics of how to provide that in a way that will not burden taxpayers too much. We have to provide a facility for our men and women who protect and serve as well. So, I would say a lot of things, but that was the thing I think that we really stepped up and actually we can be proud of, that one of the primary things of our city, I think, is to provide public safety and make sure our citizens are safe. So, I support that and I'm satisfied to be part of that.
Thank you for serving the past four years, and hey, double thank you and kudos to deciding to run again.
Thank you.
Anybody whose commitment to serve this great community is welcome.
Just a little snapshot of your campaign, so this is an election year. Most people don't realize 2019, but in City Council, they run in a kind of off-year, but 2019, so you're just finishing up, so 2019, you're going to be on the ballot this November. So, I'm just kind of here to know you a little bit, for those that don't go deep. So, you have a lot of family roots here in Puyallup. So, even tracing back, I saw your great-great-grandpa, Harry Summerfield, was actually on the original City Council, back in 1889. So, just tell a little bit about yourself, what you found out through that research.
Thanks Luke, that is a part of me that warms my heart because that goes back to family, right? I mean, we all belong to families. So, we see a lot of families of many generations who have gone to school here, have worked here, and so I'm just one of many families who have some history here, and what a wonderful place for all of us to share uniquely. I feel very important to find yourself, so a little history with a background.
I should mention, we are at Downtown Group. A big shout-out to Downtown Group for hosting us today. If you've not been here, it's a wonderful location, coffee, meeting spot, fill your vlogs here, they have beer, wine, friendly staff, and a lovely blender.
That's just a short walk from the park right there, the Puyallup Park, so.
Yeah, it's right in the hub of our park, right over here. It's a great little place, a lot of people are really enjoying this location. We come here quite often for meetings and meet constituents and my family, so it's wonderful. So, getting back to the personal side of this, my wife and I were fortunate to be able to homeschool all three of our children from kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade. And so, we live right here in Puyallup and we're teaching them all about all aspects of our city. One of the things that we discovered is when we were reading the Puyallup History Book, and I was going through with my children, I recognized a name in there that was on the first City Council, and it was Harry Summerfield. I thought, oh my gosh, I think that's a family member. So, we began to do some research, turns out that my great-great-grandfather was on the very first City Council alongside of Ezra Meeker, and was part of the formation of our town, our city.
Wow.
And then I began to do some research and realized that I've had five generations, I'm the fifth generation of Puyallup residents who have lived in the city of Puyallup, starting from my great-great-grandfather all the way up to myself.
And so now, six with your children.
Six with my children, yeah. So, it's kind of neat to see the legacy of each generation having roots in Puyallup and really caring deeply about Puyallup, and so it was kind of ironic to discover this little gem of things. So, I think that was part of the big things in terms of my family, so I feel the sense of call. So, when I found out the grandfather was on the first City Council, I thought, how interesting, wouldn't that mean he needs to carry on this legacy of service to our community? I feel honored to have one small part in being a part of that.
Great, well, I want to say a shout-out. I see Laura Butterfield, the CEO of the Fife-Edgewood-Milton Chamber is watching Puyallup-Sumner. Thanks for tuning in. Giovanni, and we also have, is it Todd McKellip?
Yes.
Hi Todd, feel free to answer your questions, we'll do our best to try to bounce through this interview, but again, love to hear from you as well, so thanks for tuning in. We appreciate having an audience.
So, you mentioned a little bit about your background with the family, being now five, six generations, so tell us a little bit about yourself. I found it was interesting, you went from, you were a pastor, then you worked for Nordstrom's, and so tell us about that.
Yeah, so it's interesting, so let me share a little bit about, we've met together a little bit, so all those industries are people-driven, right? So, as a pastor, you're there to serve constituents, basically to refresh their hearts, and serve them in a way that is meaningful and sincere. So, that was kind of a pastor's work, I wanted to do that. I caught that call as a little boy, and fulfilled that call in 1999. I graduated from seminary, into Tacoma State Seminary, and went full-time in 1999, and did that for about six, seven years. So, really fulfilled that kind of desire. The other thing, I've been involved in retail for most of my life, and currently work at Nordstrom in downtown Seattle at the flagship store. I'm a personal stylist there, and one of their top sellers, and it's not a great fit for, you know, what they do there. So, guys will seek me out, I'll wardrobe them with a complete wardrobe core, and just engage them in a very personal way, not just clerking, but actually engaging them in a very personal manner. So, very, very personal, and really in terms of my service to the City of Puyallup, I really see it, so when I first moved to Puyallup, I remember I would take my children, because part of homeschool was let them get involved in civic government. So, I took them to City Council meetings. At that time, Kathy Turner was there, Don Malloy, and Ken Martin, and many others were there, Burettes were there, and letting them see how City Government works. And they were young, great school children. I remember at my time, that was kind of when the birth of this kind of interest in City Council, and entered me, but I didn't really respond to it. So, of the 20-some years I've lived in Puyallup personally, I felt that call for City Government for about 15 years, but just because I received the call, you have to wait for the right timing.
Of course.
So, for me, that timing didn't come for 15 years, and I waited patiently, because it wasn't just responding to the timing of the call. So, I remember when this opportunity came four years ago, I saw the opportunity, and I asked myself this question internalized, I said, "Should I run?" And there were four words that came to my mind in two-word increments, and those four words were, "It's time," "I'm ready." And so, I really felt that timing was right, so I knew this is my time to run, so I ran and was very grateful to win by significant margin. Now, moving forward, when I entered into this race, it wasn't a one-time, one-four, I'm out. I really felt the call to, I desire, Lord willing, is to serve three terms, because that's the maximum limits that you can serve on City Council with our current coding. So, with God's blessing and with the voters' affirmation of my service, I hope to be elected this term, and the following term, and then I'll be about 65, like a retired, hand over the baton to somebody else, let them have all the joy. So, the call is still very strong, I've been working really hard to continue to serve our city and continue to assure another victory coming up here in November.
Great. Krista Thompson from Red Canoe, also a Board Director on the Chamber, thanks for tuning in. That's great. Tell us a little bit about your kids, so you have, is it three?
Yeah, three children.
Okay.
Well, now the family's grown, so.
I was gonna say, not a point of kids anymore.
So, my wife, my wife is Deborah, she's an amazing woman, she works for the Puyallup School District and serves our school, our Puyallup School. So, I have three children, and then two new children, actually, three new children. So, three children, boy, girl, boy, Dean Junior, my daughter Brienne, and my son Joshua. But fortunately, we have this thing called marriage, as our family is growing, so I have two more children.
Yes, yes.
So, we have a son-in-law named Craig, I'm very proud of him, he works for Boeing. And then, I've got this wonderful young lady named Amanda, she's a nurse, and she works for a local Wood Creek, a nurse here in Puyallup, and works with a lot of children and families there. My wife works for the Puyallup School District, my daughter works for the Puyallup School District, my son-in-law works for Boeing, and is involved there, and my other son works for FedEx, so we've got all kinds of local jobs and local businesses. But the newest thing I'm so proud of, I joined this new club.
Yes.
This new club, I heard it was a really cool club, and I got to experience it about seven months ago. This club is called the Grandpa Club.
Oh, the Granny Tea Club is my favorite too. Oh my goodness.
So, this Grandpa Club, I was birthed into, it was birthed into our family, and her name is Lucy.
Yay Lucy!
And a shout-out to Lucy. And so, she's the joy of my heart, and I'll share this little analogy, for those of you who aren't grandparents yet, let me give you a preview of what it's like. So, one day, I was meeting with our children, and our children were young, and we were at the pediatrician's office, and she said to me, she said, "Dean," she says, "you know, your children are wonderful, and you love them, and they're great." He goes, "but when you have children, you love them, but when you have grandchildren, you near worship them."
Yes.
And I remembered that, and I remember when my granddaughter was born, I really realized what he was saying. They're such an extension of your legacy, you see your children's children, and then, Lord willing, you'll see my children's children's children, and you see this legacy of your family expanding out. What a wonderful gift, right, this family, so.
Oh terrific. And you have a dog?
I have a dog, and so.
Named Abby?
Named Abby, she's an English Springer Spaniel, and she is, let's put it this way, well cared for. She does not do without very much, and she's also a special needs dog. So, she was, what do you call those, shelter dogs?
Yeah.
And so, she had some eccentric issues about her, and so we took her in with those eccentric issues, worked them through, but now she's developed some diabetes. And so, we're committed to giving her a long life, and so every day, my wife and my son give her an injection every day to make sure that she can live a long, happy life. So, she's the joy of our life, she has a lot of commitments, but she brings a lot of joy and happiness to do, to make sure she has a good life, yeah.
Nice. Well, let's talk about your campaign. So, you've got, you know, nearly four years in, still have that compelling sort of reason to continue. Talk a little bit about what your campaign platform looks like now, today's issues.
So, there are two huge, there's a lot of issues, there's a lot of fine-tuning, but I'll talk, just for the sake of today, we'll get down into the depths later on into the year. But the two big things are super, super important, they're very high on my list, quite, quite not high on my list, but I think high on our community's list, are I want to really continue to expand public safety, make sure it's sound, okay? And we have a great public safety clinic, police empire. And then I want to make sure that economic development is harness. We are, right now, we are living in a modern-day gold rush. Years ago, they would go to Alaska to dig for gold and find riches. R riches are right here in our own backyard, and we need to make sure that we're partisan tap, that not take it for granted. So, what are we doing to make sure that we are allowing for reasonable growth, right? Without an oversaturation to where we sell ourselves out, right? But we want to make sure that we're not so afraid of growth that we don't tap into this economic development, which is going to bring in, I think, more services and benefits to our citizens. So, so those two things are huge, and I want to be one of many champions to make sure that we enhance and make sure to support, hold in hybrid guard, public safety, but also make sure that we have reasonable and healthy, vibrant economic development in a way that respects our culture, but allows for prosperous, for all of us to enjoy. And I think that, I know we can do that, we will do that, and that's the collaboration that will arise available.
I see we have a question here, so it says, "Dean, can you share with us your top three achievements for your, well, our achievements."
Oh, okay, yes. So, I think our achievements, as I mentioned earlier, were the recent approval of the police contract that took our police officers, they were having trouble finding the recruitments for people that were retiring out, because their, their kind of norms within their industry was about midway, and so to attract the brightest and the best officers, we needed to raise up that ability of pay and compensation to attract bright officers to come and recruit. So, we passed that, that was huge, that was just recently. Again, the second thing, I think, was bringing on up to 10 new officers into our police force. That included two school officers to protect our children in our Puyallup School District. That was huge, and we see all the events happening in the world today, we want to make sure that our children are protected, so we have now two officers added to our school district, and then six additional officers as well. And so, I think those are the two that come to my mind. In terms of the third one, a little bit of a nuance, you know, Puyallup has had a history of some less-than-cordial civility on the Puyallup City Council, and you look at some of the past councils, there's been maybe a way of improvement. Now, current council, we have disagreements, but at the end of the day, we, with that aside, we move forward and work on the next issue. So, I think there's been a culture of civility that says, "we can disagree on an issue here and there," but our commitment to moving forward on other issues is not going to be stymied by a disagreement that we had, or a different perspective that we had in the past. So, I think that was an improvement. It's hard to necessarily engage, but I can tell you from my perspective, I really think we've made some huge improvements, and many others have the same thing. So, that would be the three that come to my mind, and if there's any more, but that hopefully gives an idea. Thank you for asking.
That's a great question. So, you mentioned your faith, where else do you turn when you are looking for kind of your own answer? I'm sure you're not a master of all issues, some areas, I'm sure you've grown to, you know, gotten deep into weeds with a little bit more, but when you're a little bit outside of your scope, who in this community do you sort of turn to from your own counsel?
So, great question, thank you for that. So, I'll tell you who I turn to, I turn to the people, because they, that's who I work for, all right? So, I listen. So, anybody that knows me and that is honest in their assessment of me, they're honest, not partisan or biased, but if they're truly honest, I believe they're going to see that I'm fair and objective, I will listen to even people that might be considered opposing in a certain opinion. And I've displayed time and time again, both privately, as well as from the council dais, that I am willing to listen to everyone. And I'll give you an example of this, and kind of put it into play. I remember when I decided to run, my wife's a huge supporter, she's an amazing woman, she always has been, but when I decided to run for council, I really wanted to make sure that I had her buy-in, that her support would make my outcomes, I think, more successful.
Right, absolutely.
So, I think, I remember when Deborah said, you know, she supported me, I could tell it was kind of a shallow answer, because I've been married for 35 years, I kind of get to know her a little.
We know, yes.
So, I could tell it was a little shallow, and she, but I wanted to get to the depths. I said, "Honey, I really want you to know, do you support me moving forward?" And there's a reason why I'm sharing this with you. Well, I remember, I didn't get a real quick answer, but I remember about a month or so later, before I actually filed to run, we were sitting down at Harbor Lights, having a snack and a glass of wine, and Deborah said to me, "I support you with two contingencies." And so, I was all, I was like, "Okay, I've been waiting for this." And she said, "Number one," she said, "if you run, don't allow people to use you as a conduit for their own agenda through you." And I said, "I will listen to everyone, but on my own man."
Yep, yep.
So, it goes back to your question, is that, you know, my source of direction really isn't key to learning to listen, right? Everyone, even people that I might at face value not see their perspective from. But I want to tell you something, I don't know it all, I don't see it all, and therefore, why shouldn't I at least listen to another perspective, and then consider that honestly and objectively before I arrive at a decision? Now, I can tell you, it's important for people to know, and for you to know, every single decision for the most part, when I hit that dais, there's a big issue on the table, my mind is not fully laid up at a time here in full testimony. It's almost like a judge, right? If a judge has already made up their mind before they go out to the bench, what good is to have the examination and the witnesses if their minds are already made up? They need to be vulnerable enough to listen.
Yes.
Before they make a decision. So, for me, I may have an inclination of where I want to go with this, but I don't want to make a judgment and close my mind off from a perspective that might give me a different perspective to be able to make a good decision. So, I think that's called self-discipline, right? And so, can you have the self-discipline to withhold my opinion until I hear all the data, and then when it comes time for decision, make a decision based on the data you've given up to that point? And that's what I try to do.
If that's not a cry-out to constituents to come participate in City Council, be there, share your voice, because he's listening to the very last bell.
I am, and that's true, that's not a rhetoric. I mean, people that know me have seen that, and many of these hot-point issues that you've seen raised to the other council, I can assure you, I may have had an inclination where I was going, but when the decision came down, it was all the way up to the very end, and then it went down. And I think that's just, that's fair, that's what people should want. You want open-minded, public servants who are going to listen objectively on both sides, and make a rational decision based on information. I don't know what more you could ask for, because if you want biased, then might as well get going to partisan things, have the stack of decks, you already know what you're getting, and then there's no mystery, because it's already been predetermined. This is nonpartisan, we should be open.
But you are endorsed by both parties.
Well, yes, so that's one of the wonderful things, and so we can go there if you want to talk about that.
Yes, let's go.
All right. So, I am the only candidate that's clearly endorsed by high-level, local parties on both the Republican and Democratic side, and so that's very difficult to do. And I admire both political parties, I appreciate their passion for their agenda, but when I took this office, I realized that I need to be true to the office, which is, this office for the Puyallup City Council is nonpartisan. And therefore, I need to reflect all constituents, whether they're Republican, Democrat, or independent. And so, therefore, I want to make sure I'm engaging and collaborating with all parties to come up with something that's good for our city. Because quite frankly, our safe streets and safe schools, is that Republican or Democrat? No.
That's life.
Everybody wants that.
It's what we care about every day.
So, this is city business, city issues, that we don't need to let, I think, partisan things kind of foul that up. So, I'm very grateful to have high-ranking endorsements on both sides, and many of those endorsements will be posted on my website some point down the road. I don't want to go into name-dropping, but it's significant, I'm very grateful, very humble.
Great, and so, let's talk a little bit about it, maybe too early in the campaign for you to be able to answer this question, but for you watching, and others that will soon watch, what would you say are some of the more defining differences between you and your opponent? And who is your opponent?
So, the opponent that's running against me is Heather Shapto. She served on the City Council when I first got elected, so we had a chance to work together for two years, and then she lost her reelection as an incumbent in District 2, she served in District 2. So, Puyallup is divided up into three districts, 1, 2, and 3, and so she lives in District 2, she ran for District 2 and 1, then she lost two years ago to Cynthia Jacobson, who ran a good campaign and ended up being victorious in that. In terms of differences, you know, I would say, you know, she's an honorable person, so we have nothing personal against her, but I think, quite frankly, the determination and the vision that I have for the Alara's position has been proven. So, you know, to take on a race going from District 1, 2, or 3 to take on the Alara's is quite a feat. You have three times more doors to knock on, you have three times more budget, you've got to minus another endorsement, you need to go on to really to invest on that. So, you know, I think the determination I have, my first order was, you know, I'm not here to hope I win, I'm running to win. It's nothing against her.
Yes.
This is the call, I want to fulfill that. So, I think the determination is a clear distinction that I think has been displayed, and it's my hope that will continue and show itself outcome as well ever, yeah.
So, I guess we could kind of end with this, but just any last thoughts on your campaign, or what you're trying to accomplish, still with?
Well, again, it really boils down to, I'd like to earn and reaffirm the confidence of the voters and the businesses in the City of Puyallup to be able to serve in a capacity that would honor them and serve them well. You know, I'm not presumptuous, I'm very grateful to have, you know, received a lot of endorsements, significant endorsements in the business community, significant endorsements in the, with public officials, and I don't want to be presumptuous. I think one of the tendencies that incumbents have is to lean upon their candidacy as a shoe-in.
Right, right.
So, I'm going to continue to work hard now, in the current office I'm in now, I'm going to continue to work hard to earn the votes to be re-elected, and continue to work hard, Lord willing, after I'm elected, to make sure that we continue to serve the constituent base of our city. So, it's an honor to serve the City of Puyallup, and I just think it's a special place, and there's a lot of potential here, and I want to see that come to fruition. I can't do it alone, I'm just one of many that wants to collaborate together to see that happen, and so I hope to partner with a lot of stakeholders to make sure that happens.
I think it would be amiss if we didn't ask you, kind of in closing, your thoughts on two very important topics, sort of polls have, polls have been cast, and two issues that are very important to Pierce County at large. One would be the homelessness, so I guess just first, Part A, you know, there have been strides and issues that have come up, and I'd like to sort of know what some of your sort of solutions are to approaching the homeless issue.
Well, you know, you're right, this is a very sensitive subject, and I would say that the first, probably two years of serving on the council, this particular issue was a burning fire of passion, and different perspectives on several sides of this issue. You know, I don't know what the total is, but I would suspect that hours upon hours upon hours upon hours upon hours of conversations and energy and thought process has gone into this issue. I believe we've now entered into, what I believe, you know, a kind of a rest, I think some things have been settled. We still got some issues to work through, but I think the hard part is over, and I think that's due to, I believe, our, the public safety element of our police enforcement loss. But I would say this, again, I was a pastor, I have faith, so I understand the faith-based community and their mandate to, you know, feed the hungry, clothe the naked, and visit the sick, I get that, I understand that personally as well as corporately. But I also understand, you know, the quality of life, or the laws to go out and walk the dog outside without fear of some public safety. I also understand about college students who want to study in our library, but are afraid to go there because of some of the behaviors that you place, and some people who are kind of infecting that with some bad behaviors. Also afraid of our children walking onto our playgrounds and finding human feces and needles, that is not acceptable in our city. So, we have, really in a sense, you know, two issues that we have to juggle. So, what I found is, before I was elected to City Council, I had what I called a lock lip, and I worked a 30-foot view, and my view was very narrow in scope, and very sympathetic towards the concerns of people who are struggling. Now, my heart is still very receptive to those who are hurting, but I now have a 40,000-foot view, because 40,000 people in the City of Puyallup, I have to be considered of in addition to that, right? So, my policy decisions are taken, recognizing the issue at hand, but also recognizing the bigger picture, and not becoming so glued to this that it's a franchise to rest. So, I do think there's an opportunity on a state level, that I think there's 282 cities in the state of Washington, and we cities need to collaborate together to petition our governor to do two things, and this is my first-class belief. Number one, we need to petition, we have to open up and expand Western State Hospital to provide those who are hurting with mental issues to have a place to go, to find some stability and some comfort to get them out of their misery, because people who are mentally unstable that need help. And if there were people walking down the street who are physically bleeding, we would be taken to the hospital. But there are people who are mentally bleeding every day, and we're somehow think it's okay, it's not. So, we need to open that up, and that used to be a state issue, we need to make that happen. The second thing we need to do, those people who are addicted to serious drugs, we need to get them the help they need, right? So, if you're busted for doing heroin or something on the street, right to go to jail, there should be a mandate for a drug rehab. And your sentence is, "You're going to go until you get clean." And you're going to go there, and then when you get clean, you can come out, if you choose And you're going to go there. And then when you get clean, you can come out. If you choose to stay clean, fine. Choose to rehab that, that's your choice. But you need help and you don't know it. So we're going to do that. That leaves the third element. What you are really in a sense, the working for or just want to get help. We cities, we in Puyallup can take care of those. We can handle that. The other two is beyond our scope and ability to do efficient jobs. So the state needs to step up and make that happen. The working for, we can handle with some jobs, some trainings, some counseling can make that happen. So we need to filter out, I think, that term homeless is too broad. We need to filter that out and get help to those who really need it. They're trying. And some good rehab for those who are hurting on a bigger scale.
Yeah, clearly a topic you've thought about. And I like some of your clear direction, clear thought on that. And so the second part of my question also has to do with, you know, Puyallup has sort of been exploring what kind of housing options might be best for economic development for our city. Where do you weigh in on housing and affordable housing?
So again, I have five generations of history in Puyallup. So I get the heritage that we come from. And I want to respect that heritage and the theme, culture of who we are. But I don't want that to be above or stop us from growth and vibrancy that our city can experience.
Right.
So sometimes there's a mentality of, I want to keep things the same that it's always been. And there's, I think we should do that in terms of our culture, in terms of our theme. But we don't want to stipend on or stifle growth for economic development for our city. So I do believe that we should have fresh downtown urban living. I think we have two great examples. We've got this great condo over here. This great condo here was built maybe 15 years ago or so. We have great residents that live in those things, that are great constituents. They support our downtown business. They're living downtown. They're supporting downtown.
Do you like the walkability unsure?
The walkability issue. So the city currently owns three pieces of property that we can stimulate right now with public-private partnerships, put up more condos in our downtown core. And that can happen pretty. You've got the Cornforth Campbell over here. You've got the AOD lot, which is a lot right behind the library. And you've got the Public Safety Building lot, like the Public Safety Building that goes up on the hill. That brings that lot up first condo. So this is a great opportunity to see that. Now, some would take that unconded. And say, oh, John's wants to throw it to the real. Listen, common sense, okay? Vibrancy, economic development, without taking the pendulum way out there and saying that we're going to throw it out. That's a warning for those of you that are used to that. I need to call that out right now. Because that's something that people would try to use as attraction. We're not going to do that. We're going to do it tastefully, high-quality businesses, high-quality growth, without a saturation of washing out who we are in terms of identity and the communities that we belong to.
Great. So one thing that I think your constituents have learned about you is you are approachable, you are accessible. So again, here with your audience today, if you want to give a shout out to your campaign, ask for an endorsement, share a phone number. Hey, there's a great plan. There's a great platform to do so.
Well, thank you so much. So yes, of course, it's an honor to be able to share with you today, both live and then probably recorded afterwards.
Yes.
Yeah, you can reach me directly. So you always have a direct line to me. My direct personal cell phone is 253-224-6390. You can call me. Sometimes texting is better because I do, you know, work pretty hard at Nordstrom. But I'm very responsive to returning your calls. So if you call or text, you can expect within 48 hours I'll be getting back to you and responding to you. I would also love to meet you in person. So people that know me realize that if you want to meet, I'll meet with you here at Downtown Brew, a place of your choosing, within reason, of course. And love to connect with you a little bit. And then lastly, you know, you know, one thing I really believe about people is you can give, people can discern, right? You can have a talking language. So I can give you all kinds of talking points that sound good to the ears. But I'm really trusting that the voters, you and the voters are going to discern, is this guy for real? Is his rhetoric authentic or is it just talking points? And it's my hope that you'll be able to discern in a way that really earns your vote and earns your support. Not only at the voters, but also your donations. And also, you know, for the volunteer, we've got to go out, we've got to campus and earn these votes one house at a time. So I would value if I, you know, kind of pass that criteria and you feel, you know, able to support in some capacity based off of your discernive authenticity, that would be very grateful. Thank you.
I think this is a great, authentic venue to meet candidates. Thank you so much for kicking off our candidate series. Thank you for tuning into Chamber Chatter Live. We look forward to meeting another candidate next week. So again, thank you to my co-host Blue and all of you listening. If my glasses, if I could see a little better, I could have read more of those comments. I do see some nice comments that they appreciate the Puyallup Summer Chamber providing this opportunity. And hey, it's my pleasure, our pleasure at the Chamber. And thank you again. Best of luck on your campaign.
Shall we say cheers?
Let's say cheers, everyone. Cheers.
Cheers, cheers, cheers.
Thank you.